Good evening, Chair. Calls order Legislative Session Day 22-029. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Pennman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come to you with grateful hearts because we know you provide love, mercy, and grace. Lord, we thank you for sending your holy son, whose birth we celebrate in this season, to deliver us from our sin. Father, please comfort all those people who are away from their families this Christmas, especially those who are serving our nation. Lord, be with the brokenhearted and remind those suffering who are alone that you are always with them. Lord, please bless our local, state, and national leaders. I pray for their strength, faithfulness, integrity, and purpose. Though we do not always agree, we pray that you will guide our leaders and bless them so that our country, state, and nation will thrive. I pray all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations. We have none. Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council Appointments. Council, you have before you a list of council member appointments to serve on various boards and commissions, and they are as follows. Audit Advisory Board, myself and Councilman Jan Giordano; Public Library Board of Trustees, Councilwoman Boyle Sodles; Citizens Nursing Home Board, Councilman Bennett; Commission on Disabilities, Councilman Guthrie; James V. Captain Jim McMahon, Commission on Veterans Affairs, Councilman Pennman; Office on Mental Health Corps Service Agency of Harford County, Councilman Bennett; Harford Center Board, Councilman Bennett. May I have a motion to approve the following?
Councilman, Council President, I move to approve: Audit Advisory Board, President Vincenti and Councilman Jan Giordano; Public Library Board of Trustees, Councilman Boyle Sodles; Citizens Nursing Home Board, Councilman Bennett; Commission on Disabilities, Councilman Guthrie; James V. Captain Jim McMahon, Commission on Veterans Affairs, Councilman Pennman; Office of Mental Health Corps Service Agency of Harford County, Councilman Bennett; Harford Center Board, Councilman Bennett.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Riley? It is moved in second to approve council appointments. Are there any discussions? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley? Mrs. Boyle Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Executive Appointments. Council, we have before us this evening Department Directors sent over by County Executive Castle. And if there are no objections, I would like to take them individually. So may I have a motion to approve Jefferson Blumquist County Attorney?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Jefferson Blumquist County Attorney.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Guthrie? Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley? Mrs. Boyle Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero negative, Jefferson Blumquist is hereby approved. Number two, Shane Grimm, Director of Planning and Zoning. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Shane Grimm, Director of Planning and Zoning.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pennman, thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley? Mrs. Boyle Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven in the affirmative, zero negative, Mr. Grimm's appointment has been approved. Number three, Joseph Slifka, Director of Community Services. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Joseph Slifka, Director of Community Services.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Pennman? Was it Mr. Penn or Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. Guthrie.
I'm sorry. Mr. Guthrie? It's been moved in second to approve Mr. Slifka. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Pennman?
I want to thank the county executive for making the appointed directors available for meetings with myself and other members of the council. I know the process can be overwhelming because the Open Meetings Act, the entire council can't meet with the directors all at once, which requires them to be interviewed multiple times. Despite the difficulties, the council is taking this confirmation process very seriously and continuously trying to understand each candidate and his position. Even tonight, we gained information about the possible addition of transit to the Community Services Division. In addition, it is reassuring that some of the former directors have also remained on staff in those departments, which also brings institutional knowledge as a resource. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon? I'm sorry, Mr. Riley?
Yes, I appreciate the county executive appointing Joseph Slifka as Director of Community Service, and I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to...
Ms. Sodles?
So I had the opportunity to interview Mr. Slifka, and he has a very kind heart, seems like a nice guy. I do, I did have some question on his resume, but after learning that he is going to also help with transit, I think that he is qualified for that. And with the deputy that he will have behind him, who is, seems to be very well adjusted and knows the direct, the Community Services Department, I think that he'll do a very good job.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley? Mrs. Boyle Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being seven votes in the affirmative, zero negative, Mr. Slifka is approved. Number four, Kevin Greenwell, Director of Procurement. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Kevin Greenwell, Director of Procurement.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Guthrie? Thank you. It's been moved in second to approve Mr. Greenwell. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bennett?
I just wanted to, you know, I appreciate hearing everybody else's comments tonight about the interviews they were able to have. And I also want to thank people like yourself, Mr. President, who were able to sit with me one-on-one and share information about each of these candidates. Unfortunately, unlike all of you, I was not able to schedule interviews with these candidates. I had interviews that were then canceled, which, you know, gave me a limited perspective. And, you know, while I felt confident in the resumes of our other three candidates that we voted on tonight, in regards to Mr. Greenwell, I still had questions that I feel are unresolved. So without being able to sit down with him, my plans to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Mr. Jan Giordano?
I abstain.
You're abstaining from the vote?
No.
Oh.
From my comments.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley? Mrs. Boyle Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Abstain.
With six votes in the affirmative, one abstention, Mr. Greenwell's appointment is hereby approved. And I would like to take a minute to recognize all four gentlemen in the audience this evening. Gentlemen, if you could please stand and be recognized. I want to thank you for the service. We look forward to working with you in the future. And know that our doors are always open. If you need anything at all, we're right here for you to help and assist you in any way. Thank you for coming tonight, and good luck. Thank you. Agenda number six, Special Presentations. Harford 250 Committee. Council, it is our pleasure to welcome Jaclyn Senashaw, co-chair, and Harford of, Harford 250, and Ms. Arden McLune, a member of Harford 250 Steering Committee. Whenever you're ready, ladies.
Technology was, oops, technology was less of an issue other, in previous times, maybe. First of all, I'm Jackie Senashaw. I want to thank the members of the council for allowing us time to address you this evening on what we think will be a real celebration for the county and a countywide celebration, an opportunity to bring the county together. As the president indicated, Arden McLune from the Lyra Dendron Foundation is with me this evening, and some of you all may know her as well. I was asked this evening, so I'll start with the answer to the question, what was the official date of the founding of Harford County? Well, the legislature passed the legislation in 1773 during their session, and it was toward the end of the year, as I recall. But the legislation did not become effective until 1774. So to try to take care of that, we decided to have, offer a 12-month celebration, beginning in March of 2023 and ending in March of 2024. When I say "we," the Historical Society is the, this is a project of the Historical Society, but it really is a collaboration with a number of the other nonprofit organizations, cultural organizations, museums, and attractions across the county. So we're very lucky to have been able to do that. Why did we decide to do this? She said, she was the arrow. Who's the arrow? There we go. There we go. Okay. The mission of Harford 250 is to really improve our understanding of who we are as a county, where we have come from, and where we are headed. And that's whether your family came here in the 16 and 1700s or whether they came here in 2016 or 2017. You're all Harford Countyans, and we all want to celebrate that. So to do that, we want to recognize and unite our residences. We want to recognize the common bonds that we have. So we hope to inspire the county residents by educating them, engaging them, and uniting them in the celebration of the county's past and looking forward to its future. We're celebrating what makes Harford County special. We are putting a particular emphasis on collecting 20th-century stories and history. Some of us may not view the things that happened in our lives necessarily as history, but those 50 to 75 years from now will view us as history. And some of the folks born in the early part of the 20th century are leaving us. One of the projects, we'll talk about it a little bit more, is the collection of stories, and we're publishing a book of 20th-century stories in Harford County. We want to promote our local museums and attractions. We want to bring people here. And again, we want to increase our shared sense of identity as members of a single community, Harford County. As I mentioned at the beginning, this is a major activity of a lot of folks. It's a collaboration. The Harford County Government's been actively involved since the very beginning, mostly at a staff level and with some financial assistance. The Historical Society provides us with a legal home. The Harford Community College is going to provide us with a lot of support for our opening event, Harford Showcase, which is on March 31st and April 1st of 2023. The Jerusalem Foundation, the Town of Bel Air, the City of Haverty Grace, and as you can see, a number of the nonprofit and cultural organizations. We are literally getting a call a day lately of, from nonprofits and organizations that want to become a part of this. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have the committee, the 250 Committee, has three planned events. The first is the Harford Showcase. It will be March 31st and April 1st at the Community College in their arena. We will have performances, community booths and nonprofit booths. We'll have art displays. And then Friday evening is more of a gala. It's a ticketed event, and it will include, it's for 24, 21 and over event. And then Saturday is more of a family-oriented event. We'll have historic fire trucks there. We'll have the booths all there, and that will be a much more reasonably priced event to encourage families to come. On August 19th, we're going to celebrate a night at the ballpark at Ripken Stadium. We're going to talk about the history of sports at Harford County, which is everything from horse raising, which dates from colonial times, to the high school football teams and the recreational baseball and softball leagues and soccer leagues of today. We're going to celebrate all of that. Finally, on March 23rd of 2024 here in Bel Air, we will celebrate the future of Harford County. We'll have youth performances. We'll have the unveiling of a piece of public art. And we hope to have a countywide ringing of the bells and baring of sirens at noon on that day. So everybody prepare now to do that. In addition to those three big events, we're going to have a memoir book, which is literally at the publisher right now. It will be available sometime in the next 10 to, 10 weeks to 10 days to two weeks, depending upon how quickly they get it finished. We're going to have a passport program to encourage people to visit our museums and our businesses around the county. We're collecting items for a time capsule to memorialize this celebration that would then be opened in 50 to 75 years. We're commissioning a public art piece that mentioned that. We're going to have TV and radio spots. We have social media. You can follow us on Facebook and on Instagram. And of course, we have a website, Harford 250, that's updated regularly with our activities and how people can become a participant in those. The public art piece I mentioned has had a lot of support from the folks in the historic preservation staff here in the county. We're going to, it's intended to be a legacy of the entire celebration. We had a public survey for the theme during September and October. I think Council President may remember seeing us at The Grove, where we were collecting votes from folks to the options. We gave them five different options for a theme. They picked Rooted in History: Lighting the Way to the Future. We have an RFQ out right now for an artist. The public information meeting on that was last week. But if artists are interested, they should go to the Harford 250 website, and they can see a link to the request for qualifications. We'll be making a decision on that in February so that we can submit a grant application in March for that. We have sponsorships at varying levels. We have had a very, very positive and a wonderful supportive response from the business community here in the county. It's really been humbling to have the conversations with our business leaders and have them say, oh, yes, we absolutely have to be part of this. For those of you who may not know, each of the sponsorship levels is named for a particular person who has made a mark in Harford County history. Most folks are familiar with the Marquis de Lafayette. You've heard of him before. He was prominent in the Revolutionary War. He marched through here. Ernest Burke was a ballplayer in the Negro leagues in the middle of the 20th century. J. Alexis Shriver was a very prominent businessman here in Harford, in Harford County in general, particularly in Bel Air. He founded the first telephone company, the first electric company, and a water company. Kate Lord was an early environmentalist. What Kate Lord and her husband Russell advocated in the middle of the 20th, in the early and middle 20th century about the preservation of land and the protection of our resources would today be called sustainability. Sergeant Alfred Hilton, you may probably have heard, is the only Harford Countyan to have won the Congressional Medal of Honor. Commodore Rogers was prominent in the early years of the United States Navy. Senator Mary Resto, for whom we have a building named, was the first woman to be a senator in the state of Maryland. And then M. Tola O'Neil is the 15-year-old hero of the Battle of Havertys. This is the list of businesses that we've gotten responses from, so far, businesses, individuals, and in some cases nonprofits. So we've been able to get a lot of, and we're very encouraged by the support of the local community. It's been really, as I said, very, very humbling. If you want to visit and learn more about it, our website is www.harfordhistory.org. Or, sorry, that's the Historical Society. Our email is there on the site, on the, Carol Diabel is our chair. I'm the co-chair. Arden's practically a co-chair. She just won't let me call her that. But what questions do you have? The one thing we're not here to ask for is, we're here to thank you for the money the county's already provided. We don't have to ask you for money. The businesses have come in and made the rest, and made up the rest of it for us.
You're the one. Well, first, Ms. Senashaw, Senashaw, let me thank you for your presentation. And yes, I do remember you up at The Grove. You guys were doing an outstanding job promoting the year-long event there. Arden, do you have anything to add?
I think the only thing I would add is, our, what we would ask of you is to help us in any way you can to spread the word, information out to the various folks. I know you all keep generally large email listings of folks. If we forwarded some information to you, would you be willing to send that out to your contacts? We want everybody to be aware, especially the showcase event coming up now in a fairly short period of time. So we get a good turnout. It'll be a fun time for families. Be a lovely event on Friday night, and we're looking forward to having everybody there.
And I'm assuming you'll have other events pop out through, throughout the year?
The three events I mentioned are the events that the Central, the Committee is planning. But it's, you're right, there'll be events throughout the year. For example, Double Group Brewery is leading the breweries in the county in the development of a Harford 250 beer. They will be releasing that in February at a celebration up at the Double Group Brewery. The Susquehanna Symphony Orchestra is going to have a special concert devoted to Harford County and featuring Harford County composers, along with a new piece that they have commissioned for it. That's in March. Lyra Dendron has a full year of activities for Harford 250. Of course, the Historical Society does. Most notably, we will be opening the Harford County History Museum in May of 2023.
I was speaking today with Kristin Kirkwood of the Harford Land Trust, and she is working with the group. It includes Soil Conservation District and other folks on a legacy farm program, and they're talking about a celebration for that sometime in June. I'm sure you all hear about recognizing farms that have been in families for 100 years or more. Apparently, the development of, the official format for that is fairly complicated and difficult to get through at the state level. But they are looking at something that's a bit simpler, that can be recognizing folks here in Harford County.
Mr. President, I just want to thank you, ladies, for your time and efforts. This looks like an exciting time, and definitely it looks like you have a lot of different events. And also, the Sheriff, Harford County Sheriff's Office is coming up on their 250, 50th anniversary as well in 2024, which should overlap just a few months. So it might be a good idea to reach out to them and maybe have some, some joint events going forward, so.
Absolutely. We'd be delighted to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Then, Mr. Guthrie?
I like your presentation up there, but I want to know when we're going to the racetrack, because that's near and dear to my heart. Is that a picture from the racetrack it used to be in Bel Air?
I think the one that we have is a race, is, I have to look. Let me see, which one is it?
For those who don't know, there used to be a racetrack in Bel Air.
I don't recall without looking at it whether it's Bel Air or Haverty Grace. Because as you know, the Graal was particularly attractive to folks from New York. And there were some very interesting characters who came from New York to watch the races at the Graal.
No. We have some interesting characters here now. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I just want to say thank you. This is something that my wife and I have personally been excited for. You know, I'm a third-generation Harford County resident. Grandpa was a dairy farmer over where Paris Mill High School is now. And, you know, so my family history goes back here a century. But it's, you know, history slips through your fingers if you're not careful. And it's a wonderful thing as a community to celebrate our past and to hold on to it. And I hope that this experience is foundational for our youth in the community so that they can get a connection to something so much greater than their timeline and how our community came together to where it is now. So thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? All right, ladies, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to the post that you put up with different events coming, and hopefully you'll have a central location where all that will go so that people can find it.
Well, the website is the best central location, and there's a great deal of information on our, particularly on our Facebook posts. I would urge people to look, if you're scrolling through, sitting on your couch on Christmas afternoon. We will have a post then, as well as a very special post on January 1st to commemorate the beginning of the celebration.
Thank you, ladies. Agenda item number seven, Approval of Minutes. Legislative Day 22-028, December 13th, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. We have none this evening. Agenda number nine, Introduction of Bills. Number 10, Introduction and Consideration of Amendments. 11, Call for Final Reading of Bills. 12, Enrollment of Bills. 13, Unfinished Business. 14, Unfinished Business. We have none this evening. New business. New business, I'm sorry. New business. Thank you, Mr. Kearney. We have none this evening. If I may, counsel, I'd like to go to comments and input from attending citizens. Where did Ms. Dixon go? Okay. Let's give her just a minute to get back, please. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Dixon.
We have 11 speakers this evening, Mr. President.
All right. Everyone with 11 speakers, just be mindful of your time. Be respectful of each other. Call your first speaker.
Evan McKellenberg, followed by Janine La Cour.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Evan McKellenberg, oh, is this working?
Yes, sir.
Evan McKellenberg, 2633 Smallwood Drive in Abingdon, Maryland. I wanted to speak on the issue of the executive branch bringing the case against Jacob Bennett. I wanted to make the suggestion that if this is an action that the county council expects the county executive to have the power to do on a regular basis, that it be placed somewhere in the county charter, since it's pretty clear that people don't expect that this is a power that the executive has. I ask that the county council make it clear to everybody through the charter what the executive is exactly allowed to enforce against members of the council. And, you know, make it clear one way or the other that the executive branch is allowed to do this or they aren't. And that's all I wanted to ask tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My mic guy is getting everything underway. Janine La Cour, 1820 Park Beach Drive. Timing is everything, and it was wonderful to see our representatives for the Harford 250 here tonight. And actually, I wanted to talk tonight and just provide the council and particularly new council people with some context new council people, with some context for the historical context about my opposition to the proposed freight distribution terminal that's to be developed down in Perryman. The Perryman Peninsula was once home to indigenous people of the Susquehannock and massive Omac tribes, who were driven out by the development that began in the 1600s by Captain John Smith. 1671 marked the creation of what is now Maryland's oldest Episcopal church, St. George's Parish, Spessucha Church. Trucks now rumble by the church, also going down on residential roads that aren't designed for tractor-trailers. The 1776 census of Spessucha Lower Hundred recorded 1,440 people. 790, or 55%, were white. 650, or 45%, were black, of which only four were designated as free. Proportionately by any standards, a nearly one-to-one ratio of free to slave is significant, particularly when compared to the entire population of the 13 mainland colonies where slaves comprised only about 20% of the population. Existing architectural surveys provide evidence that slavery was practiced on the peninsula. According to survey HA 1722, Perryman is the only canning community to remain fairly intact, and that survey goes on to say, through both the Revolution and the War of 1812, the region remained a simple and heavily harvested rural area dominated by large, slave-driven agricultural concerns. According to 18HA 193, Hopewell Farm Complex, the BGMV Perryman Historic Sites 1 and 2, per that survey, the property could provide information concerning Maryland's black population at the time slavery was practiced. In 1917, Aberdeen Proving Ground was formed by the U.S. government on 69,000 acres. 35,000 acres were upland, and 34,000 acres were swamp and tidal land. It's relevant to note, it took an act of Congress and two presidential proclamations providing financial compensation to persuade the farmers to leave their property. Compensation for the land taken varied based on occupation and race. Those swamps were in places called Poverty's Island, Planner's Delight, and they've been wiped off based on development. So there's no doubt that slavery was practiced in the peninsula, and we have an opportunity to review that property that's being proposed for development, respect the lives that were lost on that property, and as Jacob indicated, our councilperson, history can slip through our fingers if we're not careful, and that's what's coming in Perryman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greg La Cour, followed by Tim Van Emden.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Greg La Cour, 1820 Park Beach Drive. The topic I want to talk about is to do with Perryman. It's on safety. Our safety guru, you all know that we are a well-tight community, Chip Riley, who is our safety guru here, he had been in hospital since late October, and he just got home last week. I'm not going to do it justice, Pam, but I'm going to try. But here we go, the safety. When I went to the inaugural speeches and the inaugural ceremonies, and I heard the speeches, safety was paramount. It was the top of everybody's list. Everybody went and pledged the safety of Hartford County. So what I'm doing right now is, I'm thinking, what's the first things that come to your mind when you hear safety? Illegal guns, fentanyl, probably the top two. There's a lot of other issues that are safety-minded. A lot have to do with our community. The developers that are planning to come into our area, they don't care about safety. They see this as a goal mine for them, because safety is their last concern. They don't want to have anything to do with it, and I'll prove it just in a couple seconds. We ask the last council to all come out to Perryman and see it. This office on the table, a lot of new people. This office is on the table, please reach out to any one of us. We'll take you through it, the tour. What we want you to recognize is that coming onto Perryman, it's one lane, one road in, one access, one lane in, one lane out. At a T-intersection, that is at Spessucha and Perryman, if there is to be an accident there, access is cut off. BMT, fire, police, caregivers, no care who, they can't get to us. Need an example? Remember a few years back with that shooting? We were trapped. I was part of it. So these things are happening. This is safety. This is what you pledged for. I said that I'm going to prove, in my opinion, a point that the developers don't care. In their plans to develop, they want to put in a new road. This is going to solve everything, people. This is beyond that point of incident where the shooting occurred. That's not safety. That's adding more to our problems and concerns. I'm just asking you all to please help us. These people get, the truck drivers, they come down Spessucha illegally, they park illegally. Tony G., last week, you indicated that you were on top of it because your constituents told you people were parking in handicapped spots. You got on it. Lines, towing, fantastic. Good job. Our new council, E and F, you can do the same thing. You said you're all going to work together. Please consult him on how he did that so quickly, and try helping us in the Perryman community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Tim Van Emden. I live at 1963 Mitchell Drive. That's in Perryman. So I want to kind of give you guys a little bit of a review of what I've seen the last year of showing up to these meetings and listening to everybody, and kind of give all the new members here something that I've seen that hopefully we can fix. Unfortunately, not, these aren't always particularly good. I've noticed this council, and by and large, the county government, is consistently inconsistent with how it rules. I'll give you a couple of examples. Previous council created a farm bill moratorium. So basically, there was a farm brewery who had, went to expand. You said no, because you had traffic concerns. Two weeks ago, Tony G. sat there and said, no, we can't build freight terminals on Route 24, because we have a lot of traffic concerns, and it's a lot of issues. Yet Perryman goes seven to nothing on a moratorium, gets vetoed, and we can't even get an override vote. And I guarantee you, our traffic problems are worse. Let's ask my buddy Ronnie here, who couldn't get home last week when a fire broke out, and the fire trucks blocked Perryman Road. Does that sound safe to anybody? You can't get home now, because you're blocked. Seems like a problem. Let's go even further. Let's go even further with this, and this time we'll bring in Mr. Castle. Back in '02, this county established precedent for Mr. Bennett when they elected Richard Slutsky to District E. Mr. Castle was here. He continued to serve as a teacher at Aberdeen High School for two years. Why is it suddenly an issue? There's been no change to Section 207 since then. I read the section. Why is this suddenly a lawsuit? Hmm, I don't know. It kind of makes you think, doesn't it? But that's okay. Let's move on. Let's try something else. I've noticed that this council in particular likes to run when questions are asked of them, and unfortunately, that's not one of your better qualities, Mr. Vincente, case in point. Six months ago, when the Perryman Moratorium Bill did not get an override vote, your answer when asked why it wasn't brought for a vote was you had other things to attend to. It's been six months, sir. Can you tell us now? I'm kind of curious. Mr. GNG Ordano, you've been ducking me for two months, sir. I still would like your answer about what you tell homeowners who can't sell their homes now because of an illegally proposed freight terminal. It's been two months. I understand there's a lot to consider, but it's been two months, and it shouldn't be that difficult of a question. And I'm picking on council president and council vice president, because they were here last year. They understand exactly what I expect out of you. Mr. Pembina, I'll break this down Barney-style for you, because I know you were a Marine. I'm former Army, so understand this is with love. Treat us as your CO. I ask you a question, I expect an answer. I don't necessarily expect it right then, but I do expect one. Every single one of you failed to answer my question last week. Every single one. That includes you, Mr. Bennett. I do expect better of you. Ms. Boilstossels, while I thank you for your email, a lot of waffle. Show me something worth reading, not empty campaign promises. The third thing I've noticed is, apparently, we have to go to court to resolve issues in this county. That's unfortunate, because it wastes my time, my money, and everybody else's time and money in this county. It's coming up on 2023. Let's all try to remember that we're supposed to be better than the previous administration, and let's be better. Merry Christmas.
Daniel Zanchetan, followed by Gordon Corner.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Daniel Zanchetan, 2633 Smallwood Drive, Aberdeen High School, 1982.
Thank you, sir.
I want to ask you all, what are you doing to protect my vote? I voted for Jacob Bennett. I voted for him, and now the county executive is trying to have him removed. That was my vote. I take it seriously. I swore an oath to the Constitution. I voted in good faith for Jacob Bennett, and what are you doing to protect my vote? What are you doing to protect the independence of this very body from meddling from the county executive? This is nothing but politics on the end of the county executive, and you need to resist it. If this were anything other than politics, there would have been a lawsuit to challenge Jacob Bennett being on the primary ballot. Nothing. There would have been a lawsuit to challenge Jacob Bennett being on the general election ballot. Nothing. And now, they're stealing my vote. They're trying to steal my vote, and the votes of more than a few Hartford County residents. And you don't seem to be doing anything about it. You're allowing it. Coach Slutsky, I was at Aberdeen when he was there. He was a good man. He sat on this council. I don't know what would prevent Jacob Bennett from sitting on this council, other than blatant, cowardly politics. You don't need to steal an election that you've won. They didn't file suit until the election was lost. This is politics. Protect your independence as a body, protect my vote and the votes of thousands of Hartford County residents. This isn't how it's supposed to work.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Gordon Corner, I believe, followed by Holly McComas.
Good evening, ma'am. No, I think you're up, ma'am.
Holly McComas, 1826 Park Beach Drive, Perryman. I've handed, given you all a handout.
Yes, ma'am.
If you would refer to that, please, and I apologize to everyone else that cannot see this. The front cover has a beautiful picture of what we're talking about when we talk about Perryman and the community that we're trying to save. I bring this packet of pictures to you, not a lot of words, but a lot of pictures, because pictures have meaning and they have impact. I'm going to go through it kind of quickly with you. Page one, you'll see Boy Scout troop, and that's from the 1950s. I'm proud to say that my father is in that picture, and he was about a year ago nominated Harvard County Treasurer. So our family's been here for over six generations, and we've been established and we're here. Page two, this is a picture of a tractor-trailer that's parked on Route 40, right off of the Riverside Parkway. When I took this picture, it was about, I don't know, four or five times I'd seen this tractor-trailer parking there for more than a week's time. I called the sheriff's office many occasions about this particular tractor-trailer. Clearly, there's a sign that says no parking. Multiple, multiple times, he decided to park there for extended period of times. Page three. Page three and a couple more. This started out as a little bit of a different book. This shows the corner of Spessucha Road and Route 40. You can see where tractor-trailers have driven over the corner there, taking out the orange cones, not just once, but multiple times. It kind of got to be a game with us. We'd send each other pictures and see new tire tracks and see who could get the tire tracks sooner. Page four is more proof of trucks rolling over that same corner, corner part right there. There's clearly a sign that says no trucks. That's not the only sign, but it's one of the signs. Multiple pages, you can turn through. Page five, page six, same thing. You can see those orange markers have been moved, they've been, and that's not people moving them, that's tractor-trailers running over them. Page seven, same thing, and the poor guy that wants to lease that corner lot, it's getting smaller and smaller by the day with tractor-trailers cutting off that corner. If you turn to page nine, this gentleman on July 8th, and I remember that clearly because it was my birthday, I was on my way to work. He's trying to make a right onto Spessucha Road. I am in my vehicle, pointing at the sign, telling him he's not allowed to be there. He clearly sees that that sign is there. He turns anyway, if you look at the next page. I'm going to skip through, because my time's almost up. Almost to the last page, there was a truck that actually went through an intersection and then backed up, because he missed his turn. He backed up through the intersection on 22 to make his turn right. I have video of it. On the back of these, I have my name and phone number. I'm glad to talk further about it. Please feel free to contact me. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Ms. Pembina.
Emma Peller, followed by Zoe Peller.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Emma Peller, 1447 Redfield Road, Bel Air. Hello, council, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to first thank you for your work to add subtitles to the live streams of these meetings. This is a great step towards making your meetings accessible for all who'd like to participate. I'm also here to ask you to continue to make this a priority by allowing virtual options for public comment. This will aid those who are disabled, who lack transportation, or who have children that need to be watched, allowing them to fully participate in their own government. I know this has been discussed here before, and I hope it continues to be a priority for this council going forward. I also am here as an environmentalist, and I would like to urge you to listen to the people of Perryman. I don't live in Perryman, but I've been there, and I have seen these traffic problems are a nightmare. They're going to continue to get worse if this development is allowed to happen. We're talking about people's lives, and I understand that safety has been a priority of this new administration and this new council. I just urge you, again, echoing what has already been said here, listen to these citizens, help them get home safely every night. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Zoe Peller, 1447 Redfield Road in Bel Air. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As a member of the LGBTQ+ community and a lifetime resident of Hartford County, I was excited to hear that the Hartford County Health Department was offering meetings for LGBTQ+ teens. I was disappointed, but not surprised, to hear that these meetings were being threatened by the Proud Boys and their hateful. LGBTQ+ teens need love, validation, and support, not violent and harmful opposition. I graduated high school in 2020, not even three years ago, and the struggles I went through as a young member of the community were something I wouldn't want to wish on any other teenager. I had to create my own community, and I tried to educate my peers, my teachers, and others in the county. However, that is not an option for most. Spaces like the one the Health Department are trying to create are instrumental to the success of queer kids, and many will struggle without that support. LGBTQ+ youth are valid in themselves and their identities and need the support of others around them. I ask that this council take a strong stand against hatred in all forms and condemn the actions of the Proud Boys and all far-right hate groups. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ron Stucinski, followed by Melinda McGuire.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
I do not look like those two, if you could tell. Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue. Good evening. I believe now there's been 27 or so council meetings this year. Our group has spoke at each and every one of them about our concerns as a community and the county as a whole, as well as the overdevelopment and future illegal proposals surrounding us that are in clear violation of our county code. The only meeting we didn't speak at was when council failed to override Glassman's veto of our moratorium, after he threatened each of you guys behind closed doors, not the new guys, behind closed doors with his temper tantrum. That's the one we actually walked out on. Well, Barry's gone, his watchdog is gone, and if you notice, the overconfident councilman Bueller from District F is gone. It's a shame he forgot to give his farewell speech along with everyone else that day. I'll help him out when he said, "Vote us out." I'll help him out when he said, "Vote us out." Now, we need to focus on what the council is here for, the residents of Hartford County. It's time to focus less on out-of-town developers and engineers, all of which do not reside in our communities and have no interest in the safety, livelihood, and well-being of our citizens. All they care about is padding their pockets and often somehow influencing those who we pay to represent us while having absolutely no care in the world how we live our lives daily. Absolutely none. We're sick and tired of being ignored. We're sick and tired of coming here every week with no answers, and we're sick and tired of being pushed aside for personal agendas. Those days have got to be done. We have many studies that were promised to us and never given to our community over the past two decades, many that affect us today on a daily basis, especially our over-20-year-old water study that's never been done. Again, let me remind you that the Perryman Water Well Field provide water to 30% of Hartford County, and I'm still waiting on anyone from Hartford County's government to tell me who. I even went to Annapolis in February with Mr. Cassily to speak about our unsafe roads. And at the time, we were approved a height monitoring systems in our area. Last we heard from our old representative is they need studies. Where are they? What's the situation, status, or holdup on our concerns? Another note, ironically, as Tim said on my way home from council last Tuesday, there's a house fire on Perryman Road. We had no access in and out of our area because of it. As we've said over and over again, we have one way in and one way out of our community. It's just not safe right now. It's not getting any safer, and it's only going to get worse. Tony G., I also want to thank you for your concern of the illegal parking in Bel Air, in the Bel Air area. It's a severe problem in many areas, especially in Aberdeen, especially in our area, in the Shoprite area and the Bell Camp. It would be great to start some sort of enforcement in that area. Finally, I just wanted to wish everyone on the council and all the new ones especially, a happy holidays and a safe holiday with you and your family and every one of our Hartford County residents, except for Barry Glassman.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Melinda McGuire, 1900 Mitchell Drive, Perryman. Tonight, I'd like to talk to about the Perryman area as far as safety goes. Presently, I go to work in the dark, and I find that there are people that are trying to go to work in the warehouses. These people do not have high-paying jobs. Therefore, they either walk, ride bicycles. Some use mass transit with a little bit that's available. But for the last two weeks, I have ran into this gentleman that is riding a bicycle, trying to go to work. And it is so hard to see him. There are absolutely no lights. When they built these warehouses, they failed to think about the infrastructure that should go along with it. There are absolutely no sidewalks. The lights are like, almost, I clocked it with my car. It's like almost a half a mile between lights. And one of the lights is actually, belongs to Clorox. It's not even a county light. There needs to be lights. There needs to be sidewalks. The bus stop is pathetic. There's a sign stuck in the grass, and there's no sidewalk, no curb. It's very dangerous for somebody standing there. These people aren't high-paid jobs, so they're doing what they can do to make an honest living. And I pray when I pass this guy in the morning that he doesn't get killed, or I don't see him get killed because it's very devastating to see something like that happen. As far as the infrastructure goes, it is one way in and one way out. We're stuck, and it's the way, just it's a peninsula. And there's no way to fix it. Years ago, when they put the warehouses in, they claimed that they were going to make an extension. Well, that extension goes on government property. And that government property belongs to Aberdeen Proving Ground. And I can tell you, I've worked at Aberdeen for almost 20 years, and really, besides when General Taylor worked there, there was a memorandum of understanding written. And since then, it hasn't gone anywhere. It may be up in Congress, supposed to go to Congress. But there is also a substation right there by Woodley Road. It's not going to happen. And if it does happen, it needs to happen prior to this project going through. There was also supposed to be a bridge that was possibly being built that went from Mitchell Lane over to Route 40. That never happened. So we are stuck. And it's not our fault that these warehouses are part of the problem because of all the traffic that it creates. And Ron, it's right. Once you get past a certain point, there's no way to get in and get out. My husband had a heart attack, and what happens if someone else has a heart attack? It took him 15 minutes to get there. That's without problems. So please, I beg you, to please consider this project for the safety. My family's been down there since World War II. We have five parcels of property, three which are on adjacent to the Mitchell property, two which are not. But we're not in a position to move. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. If I may, let's go to business from council members. Mr. Bennett, let's start with you tonight.
I just want to go over a few events in the community and then some other information I want to share. Cedar Lane Holiday Light Show is Wednesdays through Saturdays, 5:30 to 10 until December 31st. Michael English puts on a great holiday light show as a fundraiser for Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. And this is located at 1111 Cedar Lane. And then with New Year's Eve coming up, you know, Havity Grace has our duck drop coming up and fireworks at Conkert Point Park. Even when my wife and I have been away for the holidays, we always watch the live stream of the duck drop because that's something that you can't miss. On January 3rd, there's a Job Quest seminar at the Susquehanna Workforce Center. And also, Critical Hit Games in Abingdon is having a free board game night every Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. So that's just a great way for kids who are looking for something to do to go out and do something. There's two government meetings coming up that might be of interest to the public. On 12/21, which is tomorrow, at 9:00 a.m., there's going to be a Development Advisory Committee meeting, and that's going to be happening at 220 South Main Street on the first floor. On 1/3 at 7:00 p.m., there's going to be an Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board meeting, and that will also be at 220 South Main Street, first floor. I want to celebrate Jordy Kale from Abingdon, who, inspired by the good work of others, she did a blanket drive for our local nursing homes and collected over 300 blankets. She worked with a couple of different community organizations, yeah, including the Girl Scout Troop 1504, the Students at Victory Villa, and Perry Hall Schools, the Aberdeen High Key Club, and Hartford Cheerleading. They also gave handmade cards to each recipient. Today, she dropped off those blankets, and I think that's a wonderful thing. On a sad note, there was a fire in Havity Grace just this morning. This, you know, touched home. Coach Brandon from the Havity Grace Recreation Youth Basketball League lost their house. They lost pets and all of their belongings. So there's a terrible fire. The youth soccer team is collecting donations for the Harris family. There's also a GoFundMe going around on social media that you can find on This Is Havity Grace. You know, it's been shared by many people. You know, their youngest went through first grade, my first year teaching, when I was a first-grade teacher. And, you know, they're a good family who is a big part of our community, and, you know, we're just a few days away from Christmas. So it's important to keep them in your minds, but also keep money out of your wallets and to them because they need it right now. Lastly, I have an email address. So anybody who was looking forward to having a carrier pigeon come to your house, I apologize, no longer necessary. My email is JDbennett@harfordcountycouncil.com. You can also always call our office, which is 410-638-3522. I apologize to anybody I haven't been able to get back to. We got our email address Friday afternoon. But now that we have it, we plan to use it and to be in communication with the community. So I'm excited for that. And with that, that's all my time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Oles.
Hi, everyone. I had the pleasure of attending the Hartford County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting last week. I was able to introduce myself as their new liaison and get acquainted with the trustees. I look forward to attending many more of their meetings, and they're actually going to be hosting their Fifth Annual Fairy Tale and Superhero Festival on Friday, January 20th of '23. It will include Storytime, crafts, and activities for kids of all ages. So I'll be actually joining them as a storyteller that day, which is an honor. Meals on Wheels has just announced their website, and the location that has the greatest need is Aberdeen. There are reoccurring and flexible volunteer opportunities, and there are opportunities for high school students as well. So take a look at their website if you'd like to volunteer. And I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy holiday, and I look forward to working with all of you in the next year.
Thank you, Ms. Oles. Mr. Riley?
Just a couple, Mr. President. Met with Think Big Network representatives for update on their continuing efforts of broadband connectivity to underserved and organ Harvard County. And we're working on trying to expand that network. I had the privilege of meeting with some 3P folks over the last two weeks. And I want to say congrats to all the directors here this evening on your appointment and look forward to working with you in the future. And Merry Christmas to Hartford County.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Janjer Danant?
Thank you, Council President. I guess we're, so I'd like to congratulate the directors. I know we've had a couple of meetings with them, getting to know them a little bit better and their backgrounds. And I do appreciate some of the deputy directors staying on and their expertise and what they bring to the table to help. I think that was very important. I don't know if anybody mentioned that, but some of the deputy directors working with have had a lot of experience and are good in your care. So that's number one. Number two, I did reach out, had my liaison, had Caitlin reach out to find out about the parking, about the fire zones, handicap zones, what's the fee for other counties. But also, I have to work with the town of Bel Air. Obviously, I'm not going to call the town of Aberdeen, but I need to get them on board to look at changing the cost of what the fines would be. So that's something I would like to work on. I know those fines have been that way for a while, and they probably need to be greater. People just have all disregard for safety. When we talk about safety, I'm going to tell you guys a little story. There's a lady that I know. I've known her probably for 10 years. She was on 83, and she got rear-ended. This lady got out of her car, went back to her car to get the paperwork that she had, and a drunk driver hit this lady. This lady wound up losing both of her legs, okay? She can't walk. She's in a wheelchair. She doesn't feel sorry for herself. She's resolved to the fact this is what God had for her. She's back to work. She's happy. Today, I had 35 people come to surprise her, to give her money because she needs money for her car to convert that over. She's getting prosthetics, but she didn't know where she was going to get the money from. So I organized something like I did last year called Shotgun Clause. None of the organizations can give this lady any money because she's not a 501(c)(3), okay? So Perryman people, I've been back to Perryman. I've been back there with truck drivers who have told me about the roads. Not from you people because I wanted experts. So I've gone down there a couple of times, found out from the experts. I know that road is horrible. Hopefully, something can get done on that. I know there's warehouses there. I know that's empty land there, and nobody knows what was going to be built on an empty land. Maybe some people thought there was warehouses. Maybe some people thought there was going to be homes. But maybe people thought there would never be something built on there. So I am sorry for that. Mr. Tim, to you, sir. My liaison has called you, and then she had surgery, and she didn't call you back. I've called you back. Now, I know you've sent me some information, and you wanted me to respond to you that way. Sir, I will be glad to call you, and I will be glad to discuss where you build your home and where you think you should build your home. And I don't hear from people all the time that say, complain about where they build. I always tell people, watch where you build. If there's a farm or land behind it, somebody's going to build something there. But she has reached out to you. She said she will reach back to you again. So I do look forward to it. So I'm talking. I didn't interrupt you when you talked, so you let me talk, okay? So, you know, safety is a big issue. People are driving with their cell phones. They're texting with their cell phones. I'm sure some of you people out here are culprit of that. Accidents are happening all the time. People are getting hurt. You know, Christmas time, drive safe. Don't text on your phone. Don't hold your phone in your hand when you're calling. Somebody else is going to get their legs lost like this poor lady, okay? And maybe somebody's not going to be nice enough to go out and get this lady money. So whatever you guys are thinking, just remember, this poor lady has no legs. So thank you, Council President. Merry Christmas to everybody. Happy Hanukkah. I think this is the third night of Hanukkah to all my Jewish friends, so.
Thank you, Mr. Janjer Danant and Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to follow up on the Executive Order 2204, which was introduced last week concerning the housing and community development and the economic development. Last week, I expressed concerns regarding the need for the division split and wanted more information. I would like to thank County Executive Cassily for sitting down and explaining the executive order, which included the request for a new director and his vision for the proposed Economic Development Division. Fiscally speaking, the new director position will be allocated from another director position, therefore will have very little fiscal impact. Vision-wise, I was excited to hear that the ideas and direction the new Economic Development Director will have, which I believe could have a positive and significant economic influence in Hartford County. As a councilman, I just want to call balls and strikes no matter the issue or the affiliation. After having the conversation with the County Executive Cassily, I fully support the executive order and look forward to the impact it can make in Hartford County. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pennman and Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to congratulate the new directors, and we'll be working together, I'm sure, over the next four years. And I'm looking forward to it. I appreciate all the interviews. For the most part, Tony and Pat, myself, sat down and interviewed mostly all of you, and I thought the resumes were extensive, and I appreciate the input. I was talking to Tony earlier today. We were talking about these problems on the people parking in handicap zones and all that. And I was telling him about what they do in Florida, because in Florida, you have a lot of senior citizens. But what they do in Florida, I don't know if we can do that here or not, but it might be interesting to look at it. What they do in Florida is they have two senior citizens that ride around in their cars looking at people for people who might be parking illegally. And what they have the seniors do, if they see somebody parking illegally, they stop and they get out and they take a picture of the car where they can get the license plate and they get the parking where it says illegal parking, and they're parked illegally. And they send that picture into the police department, and the police department mails them tickets. So I think that's great because the policemen can't be, the busiest the policemen are and the deputies are, they can't be riding around looking at all this. And I know, I see a lot of it myself, and I think that's a great idea. I don't know whether it'll work here or not, but we'll see. Also, the transit system in Hartford County, the County Executive Cassily sent out a notice that next week, all the transit system in our county will be free. So he's allowing everybody to ride on the transit system free of charge next week. I'm sure there's a lot of people in Edgewood that will enjoy that break. Last night, I attended the Board of Education meeting last night. I'm the council's representative to the Board of Education. And last night, they worked extensively on all the dates, the remaining dates into 2023 for the school year. So all you that are interested to know exactly what the dates are, the holidays, when they'll be off, et cetera, et cetera, just go online, go to Board of Education. It's all on there, and you'll see. You'll see it. With that, I welcome, wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, and be safe and stop shopping because it's too crowded. And my wife's complaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. For me, I just want to recognize that sadly, we've lost another For me, I just want to recognize that sadly, we've lost another great pillar of our community here in Harford County with the passing of Sheriff Bill Kunkel. He's passed away at the age of 94 this past December 13th. He served as the Harford County Sheriff for 18 years. He was a true family man, dedicated to his wife, his kids, loved his county, truly loved Harford County Sheriff's Office and all the men and women that worked there. As a young guy, I had a pleasure to get to know him through the bakery and got to see him on a regular basis, and then kind of lost track with him over the years, but then getting involved throughout the political scene a little bit, ran into him again, and he didn't change a bit, just got a little older, that's all. But just a fantastic guy, absolutely going to miss him, he's going to be missed by many. A true, true pillar of the community. Also, I want to thank Ms. Dixon again, and the staff, and the IT Department for working on our closed captioning. We should have that here in the chambers, or excuse me, on TV in the next month, I imagine. So we will continue to push forward, try to bring other amenities to the council as financially able to do that. I want to thank the directors for being here with us this evening. I look forward to working with all of you, as I said before. Mr. Grimm, in the next four years, you're going to be a very busy man again with comp zoning and the master plan, so I know there's going to be a lot of eyes on that. And as I said before, I want to work with you with different components to that zoning code as we talked about the other day, so looking forward to that. And with that, I want to wish all of you at home and everyone that we know a very Merry Christmas and a great start to the New Year, a great start and safe New Year, and a happy holiday season. So with that, we'll close. Daniel, if I may, I'd like to see you before you leave, real quick. Tim, before you leave, I'd like to see you, too.